I told them because about, I gave them a background about you.
Still getting used to it.
So, all right, I'd like to call the January 8th. The 8th today? Planning Commission meeting. Can I get roll call?
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Gesmi.
Here.
Fox.
Here.
Nobak.
Here.
Okay, before we go any further, I want to introduce two of our new people on the Commission, that'd be Jesse Fox and Chris Nobak, and welcome, and I hope you'll be good additions to our Commission. Okay, next on the, is to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Hema, second by Johnson, to approve the tonight's agenda. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. And go over the minutes of last meeting, December 4th.
I move to approve the minutes for the last meeting.
My second.
Motion by Hema, second by Johnson, to approve the minutes of December 4th. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, carries. There's no public input, nobody signed up for public input, so we'll just dispense with that. Next item on the agenda is a couple of public hearings, and I'm going to turn it over to Zach, and he's gonna give us the background on the public hearings.
Awesome. Good evening, Commission, and to the new faces, welcome, guys. First item for discussion is the pre-plat amendment and variance on behalf of the Timber Ridge Development. So, just kind of a little bit of timeline here, back in August, City Council approved the preliminary plat rezoning and all the PUD plans to get this development kind of started, but per the resolution, the originally submitted two-plus acre, or excuse me, four two-plus acre estate lots located in the southeast corner of the property, should be a map in your packet to kind of get a feel of where they are, they were moved and replaced with two outlots. So, fast forward a couple months, and City Council amended a portion of city code that allowed by variance residential lots to be serviced via well and septic rather than connecting to city sewer and water, that sort of thing. So, tonight, Timber Ridge is asking for a variance, variance approval, so those estate lots can be served by well and septic, as well as to add those four lots that were outlots to be added to the approved Timber Ridge preliminary plat. City Services won't be able to service those couple, those estate lots for a while, and there should be some soil borings in your packet that kind of show the suitability of well and septic and kind of show that the soils can, will be able to have well and septic on them. So, with that, just a little bit of a background, if you guys have any questions, go from there.
I think I understood this correctly, but it's just the four lots that are getting septic sewer, right? Not the whole subdivision or addition, okay?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, so, right now, I'm gonna open up a public hearing on Timber Ridge preliminary plat amendment. So, if there's anybody that wants to speak to that, now is your time. Second call, anybody wishing to speak on the preliminary plat amendment? Third and final call, hearing none, I'm gonna close that public hearing, and then, I'm gonna go right over, and I'm gonna open the public hearing on the variants of the lots. So, I'll entertain anybody that wants to speak on the variants. Second call, anyone wishing to speak on the variants? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on the variants? Hearing none, I'm gonna close that public hearing. Now, that's done, so, I think what we should do is...
Vote in.
Discuss B, the variants first, because if that doesn't pass our muster, then we don't have to go to the amendment. So, I think we should discuss Resolution 2024-02 first. So, that, we're just approving a variance to allow well and septic systems on those, those aforementioned lots, and the soil borings and everything reports are in your packet, and they were positive, right? I mean, as far as thumbs up.
Yep, I think there is a multiple site, there are multiple spots on the sites that could be acceptable for well and septic.
Okay. Do we have any other questions from the Commission? Chris, Jesse, say something.
I think everything looked reasonable on the borings, and I guess I don't know a ton of information about this. What, I guess, what would happen in the, as development goes down the line and it gets out there? Does the city then force a change?
In layman's terms, I'm gonna say, when it's available, they have to hook up, there's no, that's just how, how it's gonna be. So, I think that's pretty close.
That's exactly right.
And at this point, there is absolutely no feasible way for them to hook up.
Right.
So, we want the development to go forward, and is the only way for that to do so. Yeah, we spent a whole lot of time on this.
Yep.
But, good question.
Yes.
Are we ready for a motion?
Any other discussion?
And I will move that we recommend for approval to the City Council, Resolution 2024-02, allowing the variants for well and septic.
Second. Move by Johnson, second by Gesmi, to approve the variants, Resolution 2024-02. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Pose, carries. Okay, now we'll go backwards to the preliminary plat amendment, Resolution 2024-01, and this is just to add it to the, oh, I had it all figured out how I was gonna say that.
It's changing it from outlots to the four lots, the state lots.
The preliminary plat, yep.
Preliminary plat.
That's correct, yep.
Yes. Now, I'm gonna ask a dumb question, I hope that's okay.
If I were here.
I have this nervous thing that's telling me that you're gonna do those outlots and not continue on with the rest of your development, is that something that, I mean, there's, there's nothing in the plat yet of your property, of your property at all, as far as lots, correct?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. Sure? Yeah, all right.
I didn't, I didn't ask that very well.
No, I understand what you're saying. I mean, the first addition is already, with development agreement, it's done, plat's filed, we're working on getting a contractor to start in the spring, the reason we didn't start this last fall is it just got too late in the year. So, again, that, that one's already rolling.
Okay.
And we're looking to get started, we have builder ready to go, we're starting to market the lots and things like that. This is just, you know, we had those estate lots that had to, had the, we had to work through the well and septic, so they kind of lingered out here, we just wanted to get that caught up.
Okay.
So, and the state lots will be a plat all by themselves.
Okay.
So, you'll see it again.
All right. Does that answer all our questions, Neil? Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
That was a good question. What's your timeline on the first, on the, on the first buildings? When do you think you'll see the first ones?
Well, the, we're working with builder right now, and we hope to have the building permits applied for relatively soon, we've got, I forgot what you call them, but pre, we can get the building permits before we put the streets in, actually.
Oh, yep.
I forgot what the term was.
You need that first, yeah.
So, yeah, we hope to have the building, you know, the models built by probably May, and then the streets in by the end of May. It depends on weather, obviously, but that's kind of what our plan is.
At the rate the winter's going, you could probably have it done in March.
I know.
Or not in winter.
The buildings, I mean, it took a little time, we had to get PIDs, we had to get, you know, everything approved, once we filed the stuff down in the county, but we got all that now, and a meeting with the builder tomorrow, no, Wednesday, at one of his models in another city, and we're gonna finalize everything.
Okay. You had a lot of positive things happening, you think you'd be putting more than one, one place up?
Yeah, I hope so.
Next year?
Yeah. Not, I'm gonna come and strangle someone. Hope that's not on record, is it?
I don't know why you looked right at Neil.
No, no, we're excited about the opportunity, and I think it's gonna be successful.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Can I ask a question quick? And I don't know if this is too forward or inappropriate, do we have like a target range? Do you have a target range for like how much these would cost, or this model range or anything, just for, do we know, do we care as a council? Or not council, but Planning Commission?
The model we're looking at right now, I think, is that 560? Is that?
That's far.
I think it's around 560,000 for the, for the model, one of the models that we're looking at putting up, and the other one would be, the other one would be less than that.
Any other questions? Okay, then I would, yeah. So, where we at?
So, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-01, right?
Right.
For estate lots to be approved, yep. Okay, I'd make a motion to approve that part of the preliminary amendment.
Second. Motion by Hema, second by Johnson, to approve Resolution 2024-01, moving forward. So, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Pose, motion carries. All right. Awesome. Okay, the next thing on the, or discussion is conditional use permit for used car dealership. Thank you, guys.
And I have a question to begin with, looking at the site map that shows what Kelly Fuels Incorporated owns now, would, and I know that the other used car lot just was on that one little section that was the old gas station.
Yep.
But if they own all this property, is it, would they have, this new owner have the, if we get this conditional use, could they blacktop that over and take up the whole space, or is there a limit to how much of that space they can use?
Yeah, there probably is a limit to how much blacktop they could have. When I talked to them, they just wanted, it's just gonna be pretty much identical to what already existed there, I mean...
But they, but they technically could expand it with that contain, I mean, is it, if we give them this permit, does it cover the entire land, or just a little hunk of current?
I suppose the permit is for the whole...
So, they could eventually pave that over and make the whole thing a used car lot? I'm not saying they would, but I was just curious.
There is most likely a certain amount of blacktop you could have on a, I mean, I'm sure they could technically probably expand the parking lot, if that's kind of what you're asking, but I don't, I mean, there's, there's some restrictions on, you can't have the whole site paved, but...
It's an old swamp down there, for one thing, right here.
Where?
It's low land.
Yeah.
Yes, they can, but they will not.
It'll take a lot of fill to make it, it'll take a lot of fill to make it right, I think.
But, I don't know if they can legally do stuff with wetlands like that, too.
Well, I don't know if it's protected or not, there.
They'll have to be on, for research and gravel.
But when they, when they approached you originally, it was just to open up what was already once there, correct?
Right, I mean, there was, this site, obviously, as I'm sure you all know, was home to another used car dealership.
Miller?
Miller Express, yep, and I think they moved to Pine Island, yeah, so, they apparently, they had a lot of success, so I think the new owners are just trying to kind of get some of that. It's owned RB residential business, so it allows commercial activities, car dealerships, that sort of thing, by conditional use, so the applicants are just kind of trying to go through the necessary steps to be able to officially legally operate this car wash.
And tonight, it's just like a consensus, we're not doing any voting, or...
Right, yeah, the application got turned in like right past the deadline for a public hearing, so it'll actually come back to you guys in February for an actual public hearing, and then, if you guys vote on it, then it will go to the next City Council meeting for final approval, but I just figured I'd kind of show you guys what's going on and get the ball rolling.
So, for discussion mostly then today?
It's just for discussion, yep, yep. If there's anything you want to look into, I mean, we can certainly look into more of that, and...
Any more input on that subject, otherwise we'll move on to the next. Okay, the next thing is the moratorium discussion on the rehab centers, we're trying to update the...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yep, so...
Did you have an assignment there last?
Yeah, yep. Last item is an update on residential treatment facilities operating in residential areas. Obviously, we've had multiple discussions at past meetings about this topic, but we haven't implemented any of your suggestions yet, just because we figured we'd talk about it one more time and kind of update the new, new faces in the room, just to kind of, everybody's on the same page, and we're planning to bring you guys a, hopefully this time official, officially approved draft ordinance at the February meeting, but just kind of wanted to get the ball rolling since the moratorium expires in May. We have a little bit of time, but it'll be May before we know it, so, and if you guys didn't know, there was a moratorium in place that prohibited treatment facilities to operate in residential areas, just to kind of look at the impacts of zoning and the city's overall health on the people who live here. I know in our, there is, if you look at your packet, a draft ordinance that underlined part kind of shows what was added, but I know at our last discussion, where there was some talks about possibly implementing green space or fencing, and kind of looking at state of Minnesota and seeing what regulations they have, so just thought of bringing it back one more time, kind of just final chance to add anything, or just talk about it before we bring it back to you guys in February.
I think to get our two new members up to speed, back in May of last year, we put a moratorium on residential treatment facilities in residential neighborhoods, they're allowed in to be one neighborhood, but, or zoning, but they're, also were allowed in the residential areas. So, the Planning Commission put a moratorium on the nursing home area, and have been studying how to update our ordinances, and we're getting to the end, and what you see in front of you is a draft ordinance. What that draft ordinance does is it calls out residential rehab centers and gives them a definition, and then, in that definition, it states what they are, it does not include group homes, we have group homes in the city in residential areas, and, and the Planning Commission said, no, we don't want to exclude them in residential areas, so we had to create a new definition of a residential rehab center in itself. And then if you go into the next side, the underlying area on the next page says, H is what's allowed in there, not including residential rehab centers, which you got a new definition on the previous page. So, we're doing one thing by creating a definition, and then on the next page, we're saying, and they're not included. So, that's where we're at today, and it's my understanding, Mr. Gesmi and board, that you had some concerns about some condition, conditions in the conditional use area, and maybe if you want to go over them a little bit, so these guys can maybe digest what you're talking about there, you were talking about some green spaces, some fences, so maybe you could do that.
Well, it was, I think Diane and I discussed it a little bit, it was about more of a security type issue, correct? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think it was more for...
In the B, in the B1 district?
Right.
Where they are allowed.
Correct.
Okay, because we're working on this in the residential area, where they're not allowed.
Right.
But you're talking about the conditions that would be, would be put on them in a B1 if a... B1 if another facility were to, okay. And you would like them more secure?
Well, that's, that would be my opinion, that, you know, so they're, they're a little bit more, if there's not enough staff or whatever, the, the grounds are still secure from.
Okay.
Surrounding, so.
That will be a, a different section of the code, and we'll talk to Shelley, and then bring back some language on security.
Yeah.
Anything else that, I wasn't at the last meeting, so anything else on the?
That was the big one for, that, that stands out.
Okay.
The minutes said it fairly good, too. The minutes from the last meeting.
Okay. All right.
Are these rehab centers, maybe they're not all equal, but are they legally able to just secure everybody inside? Or do some people, are they allowed to come and go as they please voluntarily?
There's been some discussion on that, and I guess there's nothing legally that can hold them there.
Right.
So.
I think the difference is if it's a voluntary commitment or an involuntary commitment.
Right.
And most of them, I think, are now voluntary.
Right.
Which means that, you know, people can come and go.
Right.
And we don't, we don't want to interfere with the ability of residential treatment centers, rehab units.
Right.
But we do want to also make sure that both the residents of, of the center and surrounding people are all protected to some degree, so that residents aren't threatened and the surrounding businesses aren't threatened. So, trying to do that in a way that keeps everybody safe and healthy.
And I would assume you, not you, but we dream up some sort of, here's our fencing guidelines, too?
Right. That would be under our conditional use.
Okay.
So, they have to abide by what we set forth as a conditional use.
So, with conditional use permit, which they would have to apply for, there would be A through X conditions that you have to meet, right?
Yeah.
And one of them would be what they're suggesting as security, and whatever else, I'll look up at the minutes, but whatever else that they came up with at the last meeting would be put in as a condition.
Yeah.
And then, when they apply for the conditional use permit, they would meet them criteria.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you think that court mandated rehabilitation has different rules about that?
About, I was wondering about that.
About residency?
I'm not sure.
How, how free they are to come and go? I mean, it's not lockdown, but probably the court might.
If it, if it's court mandated, I think, or at least in Illinois, there were, you know, they couldn't get out without getting a pass and a.
Yeah, you had to have a pass.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or if it's voluntary, you can, you know, go back and forth, but in, if that was in Illinois, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure what it is. Never known anybody.
Did, did we find out, did the state have any, like, conditional use things for these kind of facilities, or did they?
You know, it's a little vague. That's something we're, we were just kind of, kind of look at and then maybe mirror a little bit and bring it back to you guys in February. I believe, though, there is something about screening that you brought up.
About what?
It's like some sort of security screening, that sort of thing. Don't.
You mean process?
No, just like fencing. That's to kind of, yeah, just give it a separate use, but.
Almost an IMAX movie screen.
Yeah.
Not that type of screen.
Sorry.
Remember my tunnel?
Yes, I, I remember our tunnel discussion.
I get literal about things.
Pose, are any other questions?
I have one more question, and I'm probably just going wild here, but I'm reading the definition of residential rehab center. And as I understand it, and maybe, again, maybe I'm just connecting the dots wrong, but, you know, whatever Twin Rivers is right now, right? Top floor there, there's people that are mentally disabled, you know, due to age or whatever. So, I see that as someone that could be managed program setting with house rules, curfews, facilitated meetings, you know, I guess, are we, are we imposing on what's already existing there, I guess?
No.
This would not refer to third floor at, it's not Twin, Two Rivers?
Yeah, whatever.
Whatever it is now. Because this is, you know.
This is specifically rehab center, but I guess it.
This is, this is for dependency, substance of use, you know, not for old age, Alzheimer's, things like that.
Yeah.
And the other thing we're trying to do is make sure that in our nursing homes or facilities, take care of our seniors or, you know, people that have, you know, physical disabilities, that we don't have people that are in for drug addiction in the same facility, because that can be dangerous to.
Good point.
That's a good point.
Seen it happen.
Yeah, so do I.
So, and I'm sure we're going to not do it 100% right, and, you know, five years from now, 10 years from now, somebody's going to say, how could they have missed that?
Well.
We tried to do.
We've been discussing it for a few months now. I'm thinking we're getting very close.
Hopefully, it should be pretty good.
And Zach does a good job for us, so.
Yep. So, so my understanding is, the plan is, next month, we're going to bring this up, and then vote on basically redefining the, the different groups, so that we can firm up the rules for each different group. And, and then also, some of that stuff about fencing.
Yep.
And that.
Yeah.
So, that'll, that'll all be encompassed in one sort of, one document, or one ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, and we got, we got time yet, too, like, till May. I mean, May will be here fast, but at least we've got some working room here.
We'll have a, we'll have a draft, and then hold a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
So, we'll get this thing moving a little bit closer to the end.
Is it, and I should know this. No, we have the public hearing here, we vote to recommend it to the city council. Does it need another public hear, okay, just have the one here.
Just one.
And then it goes up to the city council for a vote.
Are these facilities licensed by Department of Human Services Minnesota? They have to be licensed.
Correct.
There's more than one, too, right?
More than one type.
Yes.
So, we need to.
The state does all the licensing for these facilities, yes.
But as far as you know.
We don't license them.
We don't license, no, no, we just, but as far as you know, there's more than one agency that licenses them?
That I don't know.
Curious. I mean, you know, the problem is if they supersede our, if their, if their licensing says, no, we don't care what you say, this is, these are the rules for the state, we can't go above that, probably.
Zach, you're, you're trying to check that out, correct?
No, I'm not.
No, Zach is.
Oh, Zach is.
Yeah.
I'm going on vacation, huh?
Yeah. Well, no, because that's.
I understand.
I think we started with what the state required or didn't, and I think we can go beyond what the state requires.
A lot of this is actually taken from the state, I mean, this, a lot of it is mirrored, really, like the whole, the definitions are, so it should be, it shouldn't supersede anything, but we'll, we'll look into that and make sure it all works out, yeah.
Thanks, Zach.
Yeah, because that one definition that they have in their, it's about two-thirds of the way down residential facility, state licensed, you know, it says, result in normal aging process considered to be chronic, and chemical dependency or chemical abuse programs are located in a hospital or nursing homes and receive public funds. Which, of course, it's almost what we don't want, in terms of the nursing home, the hospital is fine, but in terms of having them located, but I assume maybe we don't get to say anything about that.
Might not.
But then again, it appears that we'll never have a nursing home again either, so.
How about a high V?
Yeah. A cruise ship.
That's my joke. That's what I want there. I'm just kidding.
Okay, is there any other questions or discussion? Okay, we'll move that on until next month, then, Zach.
Thanks, Zach.
Okay, that's everything that was on the agenda. Is there any input from anybody else on any other matters? Once again, welcome, Chris and Jesse.
Thank you.
Happy birthday to Diane, whether she wants another birthday or not. She's getting pretty old.
I was going to say, the, the alternative is not good, Steve.
That's right, that's right. So, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Motion by Gesme, second by Chris?
Yeah.
Jesse? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Pose?